Announcement this evening. The board met in executive session for thirty minutes to discuss legal person. And then we get to some fun stuff. So our first thing is recognition of ours.
Just a little, oh, by the way, I'm great. What's all on the athletic director here in Lewisburg right now? It's since October first, happiest when it was. And I've enjoyed working with our student athletes very much. We had a pretty successful winter sports season this year. Our bowling team at the beginning of the year, we were really worried about having enough members for the bowling team, but we did end up with enough members for both the boys and the girls bowling team. And the boys varsity team finished fifteen and thirty-five. And the girls finished fourteen and thirty-six, but they qualified for regionals and they went to regionals and they ended up finished nineteenth in the region and they were excited about that. We have a swimming team that is competing as we speak right now in the state tournament. That's why they're not here tonight and represented Mason Wooderman and Madison Lambert are the coaches. They did not have a lot of people out for swimming. They had twelve swimmers. But they had a lot of quality swimmers. Of those twelve swimmers, five of them qualified for the state tournament. The the girls that qualified were Emma Hopkinson, Jillian Donner, Jillian Muchler and Meg Mitchell. And Colin Shannon was the boy who qualified for states. He's a freshman. He swam the five hundred today, the two hundred yesterday. None of them qualified for the state finals. Emma Hopkins has qualified eighteenth, so she was the closest to getting to the state finals in the hundred butterfly. The boys basketball team qualified for districts. They had a record of fourteen to nine. They lost in the first round of districts to Central Columbia. But again, they had a pretty successful season. The wrestling team is coached by Justin Michaels and they're here. Justin, you want to come up and introduce your person? They had a dual meet record of twelve and eight this year and Landon Wagner was a regional champ and a state qualifier.
So our regular dual meet season, we finished as a team as a twelve and eight record, qualified for our district duels. And then we entered in our individual postseason where we had four wrestlers place at our sectional championships. We had Nolan Althoff take third place, Landon Michaels took second, Landon Wagner took fourth place and Chase Wenrick took second place. Those four individuals qualified for our district championships and at the district championships, we had three wrestlers place. We had Landon Michaels take sixth place, Landon Wagner take fifth place and Chase Wenrick take fourth place. Those three qualified for the Northeast Regional Championships and at the Northeast Regional Championships, Landon Michaels placed in the top eight, Landon Wagner won gold, got first and Chase Wenrick took a fifth. And by Landon Wagner winning the regional tournament, he qualified for the PIAA state championships that was held last week. And at the PIAA state championship, Landon came home with a state medal and took eighth place. And not only did he claim a state medal, but he also won while he was there his one hundredth career win. So Landon's here with us tonight, so I'll have Landon come up. And for shy. Achievements, we also have four wrestlers that met the criteria for the all district and all state academic awards. In order to qualify, you must have a six sixty percent winning percentage and then obviously your GPA. First team, all district and all state will be Landon Michaels and Landon Wagner will both be first team, all district, all state. And then we had a second team with Chase Wenrick and we had an honorable mention in Ethan Long. So. Land would like to say.
Yeah, I'd just like to take this time to thank my coaches. Every single one of them, they put in so much time. To each and every one of our guys, just making sure we're always in the best position to succeed. And taking time to break down film all postseason long. You know, the first two weeks didn't go as planned for me, but they just continued to trust in me and support me the whole time, making sure I was still believing in myself, staying confident and I think that was a huge part of my success. So I just want to say, you know, thank you to them and I'm excited for what next year brings. We have a lot of younger guys. So I'm excited for them to step up, play a big part in our team and just get back to work for next year now.
And when you talk about second chances, Linda is a prime example of that because two of the people that beat him in the district tournament, he turned around beating the regional tournament to to get to the state tournament. And the other thing that they didn't mention was he wrestled well at states. His first match, he won pretty decisively. I think it was seventeen to one. He lost the next match to probably about the second or third ranked kid of the stage, a really nice wrestler, lost two and five nothing. And his third match, he wanted to qualify for the medal round. And then in the medal round, he was in a tough match and was met had a medically forfeit. So we think he probably could have finished higher, but he had a medically forfeit out. And he's now out for the baseball team. So hopefully we'll have good things for baseball this year. The girls basketball team is coached by Grant Sample. They had an excellent year this year. They finished with a record of nineteen and seven. They finished third in the districts, qualified for states. Played Forest Hills in the Johnstown area on Saturday and lost by a score of sixty-one to fifty-one and Mr. Popovich died. We're out there and we were just glad we weren't wrecking. It would have been a different score, right?
Some game. First of all, I'd like to thank the administration. I've had a lot of home games this year and the girls actually, since I've been coaching the eighteen years, I don't think we've ever had a team that's been undefeated at home. So it's always good to have support. I'd like to thank Greg, kind of this new this year, but just kind of takes the ball and run with it. He's always there, always helping. I just get any phone call, immediately gets back to you. So it's great to have. Adam Transportation and Captain Jack, he's our bus driver, comes to everything. Just he's a great all around guy and was looking after the girls. Comes to the games and we were at home, so it's just, it's good to have. This year we tied for the Heartland Conference Division Two. It was our second conference championship in the last fifty years. So it's a lot of hard work for the girls they put in. This year individually, Madden Warriors was co-MVP for the Heartland Conference. Tegan over Sunday was first team, Ava Mato was second team and then Ava and Tegan were all defensive team. But really these seven girls right here, it was just all season, all of them effort, putting in practice behind the scenes. We had a stretch in January, I believe we had eleven games in twenty days. It just with preparation, coming in, working at practice, it is a grind. It is hard, but they did it day in, day out. They gave their best effort and it's just everything, all their athletes this year, well deserved on their on their part, but thanks to the girls and also I'd like to thank my coaches, Coach Miller, my my wife and then my my team managers, they they started spring sports this week. So that's my seven year old and four year old. Are at every game, they shout Lewisburg and they they dress the dragons, run out with the team. So it's it was, it wasn't my idea, it was the team's idea. And so I just, I really thank them for that. My family is definitely incorporated with the Lewisburg Girls Basketball Program. So thank you.
I just want to introduce the girls that are here. Want to point it out just in a long shorts. Since we go back there, Casey Miller. I've never seen him this shy, I can tell you.
I I just don't think I'm like the best representative for this team because like.
Just stand strong.
You can go first. I can go second. You got it. Okay. All right. Well, I just want to thank everyone who helped us and supported us along this long season. And I think we had lots of successes, ups and downs, and we just conquered it through as a team and we all love each other and it's just fun to be apart.
I also have to say along with what anyone saying with support and everything like I think this is the best year we've had in terms of support that we received from like our fellow Lewisburgians and just the school in general. What's all over here is, in my personal opinion, the best athletic director I've ever had. He goes relentless with every single one of the athletes that he interacts with. And it just shows that he cares. And then from the team aspect, I mean, we faced, in my opinion, the most brutal schedule you could possibly be handed in, like Central Royal Sox, Houston at the beginning of the season. Double headers, as Coach Brand said, eleven games in twenty days. That's insane, no rest. And all the while we're battling out in practice, going like a hundred percent half the time. So, yeah.
I would also. I want to emphasize on the like the stretch that we had. We had so many back to back games and like we handled it amazingly. I also want to emphasize that we beat Central for the first time and like my. So and it was just like such a great team, like like gave defensively and everything like that. And also like we could have put our heads down after we lost to Jersey Shore, which I think it was like the left hand for us because we really thought we could win the district, like districts this year, but we came back and we fought hard and sealed joke out third place and then for tails, like we said, the referee. I also want to, I personally want to shout out to Coach Brent and obviously Mal because I came in as a freshman, not knowing what the heck a screen was. And they did not like kick me out and I'm like very thankful for them for like supporting me and also Miller and she's beyond like a coach. She's like a friend. I mean, not like too much of a friend, obviously, but like, you know what I'm saying? She cares and she's she's there for you academically, athletically. So I'm just very grateful to have been on the team and thankful that I spent the four years with them.
Just a real quick, an item for you as we turn now to the spring sports season. And we have two hundred and nineteen athletes out for high school sports this spring. Which I think is a really nice number. And at the middle school level, seventh and eighth grade only, we have ninety-two student athletes out for field hockey, boys and girls soccer. So I think that says a lot about the district. We have that many kids out for sports. Thank you so much. Any questions? No? Thank you.
All right. That's always great to hear. I feel like we're all going to say something at the end, by the way. All right. So our next presentation is the Kelly Elementary Men Intervention Program.
I am very happy to introduce Mrs. Cindy Coxbeck, Mr. Shane Kishel, Math Intervention K5. Go ahead, please.
So the coolest thing about being here tonight is this is my twelfth year in the Lewisburg School District. And being an elementary school teacher, being a third grade teacher, it takes a while for the kids to get up to this level. So being able to see them and knowing them and remembering them really just hit home a little bit there because, you know, that's what I'm working for. That's what I do. I I'm trying to get them to be ready for the real world and seeing seeing them and starting to remember them. It's starting to get really cool, but also means I'm getting older. So. So I'm Shane Fishel. Like I said, I've been here in the Lewisburg School District for twelve years. This will be my fifth year in the math intervention program at Kelly Elementary, if you want to go to the next slide. So this is a rundown of what intervention looks like for me on a daily basis. So each year there's about five to twelve kindergarteners, eight to fifteen students in first, fifteen to twenty-five in second. And there it has twenty-five to forty students. And this year I am seeing on a daily basis approximately eighty-five students a day. So just interacting with them on some level in mathematics. And I'm really proud because I've been able to take a program that was one where students were being taken out of their sciences and their social studies classes, their writing times, and I've been able to integrate math into more of a core math intervention into more of a core program that happens either within the math block or during wind time. And I know that there was a presentation on MTSS at wind time a little while back and so I've fit a part of it there. And then with my kindergarteners, that's special because I've kind of fit that into just your your basic small group intervention time. But it just gets me, I'm just really excited that I'm able to, you know, work on building the relationships with kids. And if you go to the next slide, Vince, that's like the key for me is the relationships that I develop with my students. So that math intervention doesn't feel like a pullout program that kids feel like they're not good at something. It's super important and vital to me as the math interventionist that I have created a room that students want to come to, students that they don't want to leave. Students who are in maybe more of a regular math room, they want to come down, they want to see what's going on in my math room because the kids that are there are excited to be there. I've built trust with them and that is one, that's the first thing for me to get them to succeed is that they trust me and they start to realize how much I care about them. Then the second piece that I want to talk about is accountability. So this year I've been really focusing on all the things that I want to do in my room revolve around making sure that kids know that being right is important. You know, we're going to take risks, we're going to make mistakes. But it's also important to be correct and it's important to try our best and it's important to get better because I was running into a situation, I feel like with my kids that you know, they felt like they just had to do and that was it. It didn't matter if it was right or wrong. They didn't think they could be right and kind of have focused this year on, you know, changing and making sure I differentiate what it looks like for them so that they can feel successful. Because once they feel successful, then it starts to really get ball rolling and they and they start to, they really start to improve. And then the third piece that I have as my focus for math intervention is making sure that I'm correct, I'm collecting the right data. Making sure that it's data that makes sense, that I can use to specifically intervene on the right areas of mathematics. And data that's just not busy work, but that is going to inform me on my teaching. It's going to inform the other teachers in the building on where the kids are progressing in their mathematics. So I've been working a lot this year on making sure that that data matches that philosophy. And you just give me a moment because when I talk, I my mouth dries up. I was telling Cindy, my first interview here at Lewisburg, same thing happened. Completely dry. Nobody had any water. It was like the first time I never brought a bottle of water. And I had to sit there and I had to wait for, I think it was Skip Proctor at the time. I'll leave the interview. Go get me a glass of water and then come back and somehow I was still high. Because handling adversity at the time was a good thing. So here are some of the intervention resources that I use in my math program. Our core curriculum of bridges has an intervention piece that allows me to take the the core curriculum and look for differentiated ways to help the kids understand some of the the skills that they need to be taught. Nearpod is something that I've used intermittently over the years and really put a big focus on it this year because I find that I'm able to bring the information right to the kids and help them to realize that they can, they can show their work and that I can see their work and that we're going to make sure the work is correct. And with Nearpod, I'm able to do a lot of that where it it brings all the information right to the kids that we're talking about. And it allows me to see the mistakes that they might be making or it might, it also allows me to show the other kids in the classroom really quickly the different ways that we can understand our mathematics. So I really love using Nearpod. And then forefront has been a vital piece to our core curriculum and my math intervention because with forefront, we are collecting classroom data. So teachers put all of their tests scores into forefront. I put our screener scores into there from the universal number sense screener that we do at the beginning of the year to kind of figure out which kids are in need of math intervention. And with forefront, we're collecting data that we can look at over years instead of it being, hey, what do we do in first grade? Well, we we look back and teachers would have, you know, their meeting expectations or they need help. And we didn't get like a really detailed picture. Our forefront's helping us to create a detailed picture of their math success and progress. I use Excel in my classroom to have students working on the specific skills that they need to be successful. I so can connect directly with their bridges curriculum, which is amazing that I can go in and it gives me the exact lesson that we're working on and I can give them practice skills that are important to the exact skill that we are working on that day or give them review questions. It's 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 really awesome for me to be able to make sure that the students are in having very intentional practice to get better. And then extra math is something that this year I've put a big focus on for fluency because there's not a whole lot of time in the day. We don't want to overwhelm the kids, but fluency is important and I'm teaching them how to use it. It's a program on the iPad that they can use that uses incremental rehearsal. So basically the students will get a set of facts that will continually rotate through so that they're they're supposed to pay attention and see the same facts over and over again and build confidence. And it's a great way to build fluency. And those are the resources that I'm using. And I'm going to kick it over to Cindy and then I will maybe come back at the end.
Hey, everybody. Again, I'm Cindy Caustic, math teacher at Lindtown. Yeah, it hit home for him seeing maybe some former students, but my daughter turned seventeen yesterday and many of those students are her classmates. So yeah, take a little breath. But thank you all for having me here today. At Lindtown, coming from the very strong foundation that Shane builds at Kelly, we then go ahead and look at all of that data that's been collected over the years. We take a look at some universal screener data that all of our students take. And then also we get to look at the history. I get to see the history of Star and the history of forefront. So it really builds out a picture of where students are according to the fourth and fifth grade standards. After I look at that data, then I also meet one-on-one with any students that I feel like might need some extra support. As Shane said, relationships are so important. So I try to work on that right away and get to know students. You know, more than a test can tell you, talking with them and asking them good questions really helps to inform me, you know, is this just a little glitch on a test? Or is this kind of a bigger thing that maybe we could work on together? Also, we're very closely with the teachers at Lindtown. Once we decide and talk about students also throughout the year, like keeping, you know, close tabs on what's going on in the classroom and what they're seeing versus what I'm seeing, their weekly, if not daily conversations that we have. So once students get to fourth and fifth grade math support, it looks a little bit different than at Kelly. The the grouping is groupings are very flexible and they're varied. So sometimes I'll be working with a small group of students. Sometimes I'll be working one-on-one with a student. And I'll also be pushing into regular classrooms. I find that very valuable because they see me and they see us as a big team. So it's nice that when I'm in there, I'm also supporting other students that maybe are on the cusp of needing something. I really enjoy being able to both push in and pull out students as we need. And it makes a lot of sense too for me as we move to fifth grade. As students maybe, you know, will not have that extra teacher moving into middle school. It's kind of a nice way to kind of tailor our intervention that we do a little bit more push in versus the pull out when we get to fifth grade. You can go ahead to the next slide. So some things that I focus on specifically, of course, strengthening foundational skills in fourth and fifth grade. It's very important that students not only know basic facts and multiplication, but they know what multiplication is and how it works with division. And over procedures also getting that understanding. So those things are big ticket items, as I call them, the fractions, multiplication, division. So definitely using that data to decide what kind of needs do I need to target. Also at the end, their core support. So like I said, talking often with teachers and making sure that I'm supporting also the new skills in fourth grade, the amount of objectives really expands. And so helping them kind of keep afloat in their class as well as build those those strong foundational skills is very important. Also work a lot on number sense, which is what we use forefront for as well. It gives us a little bit more information. And number sense, you know, is just being able to be flexible with numbers and not having to always write it down to solve it, you know, being able to talk it out and kind of manipulate numbers in that way and also growing confidence. It's something that I notice a lot when they come over to me is that maybe they don't have all the confidence that they need. And if they just get that little boost and that cheerleader, it can make all the difference to say, oh, I can do this, you know, I can have success with this. So that is a big part of what I do in my in my classroom as well. And building number sense, I do choose at least one day a week to kind of do a game that builds that. And you know, we need that, we need that, those kids to like to come to see us. So those games usually really help with that. So that is something that that we do. I give opportunities for students to work on puzzles and games and and have fun with math as well as work on those foundational skills and those things that they are working on in their classroom. Very similar resources, as Shane pointed out, Bridges in Math is our core resource and I use that often and refer to that often. And also the Bridges Intervention piece, they target those core foundational skills that I've mentioned. Also, there is Math Learning Center. They've got great apps that we use often with the kids to kind of show their thinking and manipulate with that visual, you know, it's very important for us to go from the concrete to kind of the representational before we go to the abstract. So I use that often. Math stacks, just an example of one of the games kind of helps recall and 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 works on, you know, anything from equivalent fractions to say finding the greatest common factor of numbers, kind of just a fun way to approach things. I also use forefront a little bit in a different way, but I do use that to gather data and decide what areas students need more focus on. And then National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, they have a great illuminations program that helps me kind of stay on top of current research related to teaching and best practices and looking at the standards of practice in math as well, having, helping students kind of dig into problems and, you know, have a productive struggle and be able to talk about mathematics and be able to make mistakes and feel like that's okay. That's part of learning. Growth mindset is something that I include as well. Considering some of our students, some of my students think that they're not good at math. So we talk about like mistakes actually help us learn. You know, we talked a little bit at the beginning of the year about the brain and how when we make a mistake, it actually fires. And so that helps us learn better. So I think, I think through all of those things, my students do grow their confidence through the year as well as their skills in our support. And here's just a few pictures that we put together. In the bottom right there, some fifth graders of mine that in the winter, you know, and sometimes things get interrupted. That's a floor puzzle to kind of work on some visual spatial things and up in the top right, that's one of those examples of how we're using their fraction cards and they, those boys are comparing which ones are equal to half, greater than half or less than half. And then the top left, a couple of fourth graders from Lindtown working on practicing double digit multiplication there as well. And then I think some Kelly kids.
In the bottom, yeah, in the bottom left corner is just a lesson. The other day we were counting to a thousand using chain links. And the kids were just in awe and shock of what a thousand looked like. So it's just showing the importance of manipulatives for them. And then just a picture of. Um, and then just a picture of my, they're a great class because they just. You know, had some really good smiling faces that day, but you know, we were. Um, having a really good lesson on showing our understanding of multiplication. Uh, the important thing that another important, important thing that Cindy and I have tried to get better and better at over the years is. Um, you know, we're at different buildings, but trying to talk about, you know, what are the important things that I should be working on to better prepare them and. Um, one of those is um developing their understanding of multiplication. So. Um, with Near Pod the other day, I was, you know, having them show their different ways that they 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 understand multiplication. Um, and that's what that picture encompasses is just them being able to to like do it accurately and then. Be able to share with each other and see the different ways that we have different strategies to think and what works best for us. So that's kind of the that picture in the middle. Any questions for us?
So there's a lot of, uh, you know, articles right now about how kids. Reading and math skills have declined over the past five years. Do you feel like your numbers are growing or are they stable? Do you feel like this program has sort of headed off that national trend?
Um, so one of the things that um happened just, uh, I think a month ago is uh there was a. A teacher from Seals Grove that was on. She's taking a sabbatical and she volunteered to, or she did, she asked us if she could come to Kelly. To see um what our math program looks like because she's looking at um successful math programs in the area. Um, and then she's, so she wanted, we were one of the more successful ones according to the state data. And then she was heading towards like Philly um to just kind of go around and see what we're doing differently because apparently. We are trending in an upward fashion in comparison, um, from my understanding. Um, and for me, the the data that I think I'm really starting to see is that. I'm seeing a lot less kids in urgent intervention. So um. You know, there's that red on the star test that they only got one percent. And it always bothered me that kids had one percent because that's not something that any child really has and. I I think I'm down to maybe one last time. Um, and so everybody is above that ten percent threshold and I'm not seeing as much red. Um, so those are the the glaring ones for me, um, those two uh pieces. And just the the way that the kids are, um, we 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 started Bridges. Four years ago. Um, and it's. Its focus is really on developing the understanding of math and communicating and using manipulatives and. All these things that get away from your traditional worksheets and I. I I just see the improvement in how kids talk now. And um, that is something that as a math person and somebody who is just obsessed with math and does math all day long. Just being able to see them. Grow their confidence in math. Um, you know, we're not. They're still going to have have those kids that they don't, they takes takes a long time to believe in yourself. But there's believing in yourself and not being able to do it and. And these kids, they don't believe in themselves, but they can do it. And that's and that's a big difference too. Um, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I would say that like you, that you kind of said what I was going to say, whereas I was able to pull in a lot of students. The first year that I've been able to work on math all year. I was kind of half gifted and half math. So this being the first year, I'm still kind of feeling all of that out. But I was able to capture a lot more students that I would have considered, you know, on the cusp or on the bubble. Um, there were a lot less like urgent need as Shane said. Um, I was just reading an article about one of the states that. Was like the only one overall that trended upward and what they were talking about and what they were doing, what was different is that they were. Talking about math, talking about different ways to solve problems and not just one. Um, and to echo what Shane said, I think Bridges has kind of helped that upward trend. If you look at our numbers over the last few years. Um, we are seeing more success there. Um, it's totally different than when we all learned procedurally, but it makes so much sense even as a teacher like wow. I wish I could learn this way. I know it's challenging perhaps sometimes when you might see homework coming home and things like that, but. I think it is making a difference and it is making our students a lot better problem solvers and math thinkers overall.
Right. Well, thank you for taking the time to present to us.
This is an update for um ending of this year twenty four, twenty five. Uh, regarding some class rank changes and then also some uh new business for next year twenty five, twenty six. With changing the grade scale and then looking at kind of what that structure will be with um kind of A through F structure. But then also with a four point O. We're gonna go to the next one there. Yep, so. Policy two fourteen class rank um was basically a major overhaul several years ago. With the removal of uh valedictorian and salutatorian. So that's when we began looking at ways to address. Um, still honoring academic achievement. Uh, so that's where. With the removal of class rank, we were transitioning to deciles. So rather than putting on a student's transcript. One through whatever the last number would be. Uh, first decile, top ten percent, second decile, top twenty percent and listing that on the transcript. Uh, to to shift away from that class rank. And then with this, uh, the class of twenty twenty five is the first year that we are not having um the traditional class rank. So that's where we moved to the deciles and that is where we would not see uh valedictorian and salutatorian. Some pieces for this year, it's kind of twofold. So thinking of our twenty four, twenty five school year. With a one hundred point system, nothing changes the grade system and uh the grade structure remains exactly intact. As it is for this school year. Uh, a couple of changes, you could go to the next one. So a couple of changes for this year is with the graduation. Because of the movement away from class rank and not identifying. The number one and number two slot as valedictorian and salutatorian. Uh, to recognize the achievement of our students with the with their academics. Looking at the Latin honors system, uh, these three rankings there, uh, summa cum laude with the three point nine to four O. And then moving down all the way to um the three five to three point six nine nine. And this specifically addresses how we're going to work towards finding graduation speakers. So who's eligible for speaking at graduation since it's a movement away from. Valedictorian and salutatorian is if a student is in summa cum laude. Then they would be eligible to apply for a speaking role. So in looking at. Uh, some history with our graduation speakers, we've had four. We've had the class president, we've had a sun tech speaker and then the valedictorian and salutatorian. So we'd still have two graduation speakers. And how we're able to get to the summa cum laude. Um, mostly everything at the high school is on a weighted system at this point. So a lot of times you'd see. Students like within over one hundred GPA. Um, who would fall into the traditional valedictorian or salutatorian. So moving to um the Latin honor system, there's not a weighted Latin honor system. So what we've done is we're removing the weight um from what we have calculated through those four years. And it is an unweighted measure. And I think there's benefits to that because then it doesn't specifically penalize a kid who didn't take. An AP course because they chose to take one that was maybe an academic course or an honors course. So it could still showcase high level performance and they would be eligible if they're three point nine or higher to apply. So we're working on uh that application process now. We're looking at kind of developing a committee of what. What components we're going to look for, what's going to be in those speeches uh that would be a highlight. Uh, for for them to share out with uh the class and then also the community who's kind of with graduation. At this, at this point, um, there is about thirty five students in that three point nine to four O. Uh, so those would be the number of students who would be eligible to apply. So then looking at next school year, this is where we'd see our biggest change. Uh, so in the traditional grade system that we've had, we have not had an A plus. And we've not had it as a ten point system. So now you can see an A ranges from a ninety to one hundred and it's. Phased out within A plus, they're ninety eight to a hundred and then A is your biggest bulk of the nineties and then an A minus. And it continues through that process with Bs and Cs. And then once it just gets into D there sixty nine, uh, we didn't do D plus uh or D minus. Same thing with F, we did not pursue that direction. So. Uh, D would be sixty nine to sixty and then an F would be fifty nine and below. And the the main reason for this change was when we are. Moving from a one hundred point system to a four point O system, we still wanted to make sure that the calculations were. Um, as accurate as possible to showcase the highest achieving students. Because those deciles do have a very important uh component. So that's why we we chose the A plus and we'll see some slides to go to the next one. Uh, to kind of showcase the importance of why we needed the A plus. It's going to change a little bit of the weighting system. We'll talk about that shortly. But over on the left side here. Is the cumulative GPA and that is a weighted GPA. So you can see that there's some competition with. Three ties of four point two. And then you can go over to the middle column and that showcases what our current GPAs are on a hundred point system. With not having an A plus, uh, so earning a ninety three to one hundred. There's no delineation between a ninety three and a ninety nine. So by just having an A then kind of distorts what. The one hundred point system is. So. When we did not have an A plus, when we were going through some trial runs of this, you can see how it distorted what the rank is. It's really important to to note there, there is no class rank, but this doesn't impact what the deciles would be. Because there could be some kiddos jockeying for first decile versus second decile. And to break those ties, looking at that that system, we want to make sure that. Our highest achieving students are still within that decile, in that first decile and then progressing into the second decile. So without the A plus, we did see a lot of ties and then a distorted uh rank there. This one doesn't have as much color to it because it's just kind of uh a little more straightforward. So. The QGPA with the one hundred point system uh is listed here. The rank goes one through pretty, pretty close to being in order. So you got one, two, three, four. You have a nine, six, five, seven, eight. So. Overall, the first decile remains in order with A plus from what we looked at. And then when you look at the four GPA of what would be put on transcripts, it then showcases. How that gets balanced out. So there's not as much change for students from the. One hundred point system to the four point O system when we have an A plus um in the grade scale. When we were reviewing this, where we kind of begun our research, so Jen Sands in the. Uh, guidance office, she was really integral in all this. She went to other high school websites. She began pooling from the top webs, from the top high schools of kind of what they're doing. The majority of top high schools in Pennsylvania are on a four point O system. And then there is some varying degree of uh schools that use A plus. Or some schools choose not to use A plus, some schools just use an A and an A minus. So it depends on the the school district there. So this kind of has been uh an impact for. How we would look at the traditional four point O system when we're talking about uh weights. So on the left side here is what the number system would be on the ten points. The ninety eight to one hundred showcases the A plus. And then as you see, ninety three, ninety seven is the A. What's unique about the A plus? And this is, this is like where, you know, I originally was like, an A plus doesn't make a lot of sense. How can you achieve above a four point O? But as we teased out the numbers, the numbers really showcased the benefit of the A plus. Because it was delineating between our top students that were getting those ninety eights, ninety nines, one hundreds. Versus the ones that were in the ninety four, ninety fives, ninety three, ninety four, ninety five category that were still going to achieve. Uh, the same GPA point. So with an A plus, an academic course would be a four point two five. So that's weighted four point two five. And that still then allows the A to be a four point O. So as we go through that system, that's what we break down as an academic. Uh, GPA on the four point O scale. The next portion here in honors is what the weight would be for an honors course. So when you go from four point two five to four point five, that point two five uh is. Equivalent to what our point zero six conversion is right now for an honors course. So the four point two five to the four point five is point zero six and that's what our current. Uh, one hundred point would be. So like point zero six, it would be like a hundred six as the weight. And then going to an AP, the four point seven five from the four point two five. Is point one two and that's what our current weighting is for an AP. So. We went off of what our one hundred point weight is of the point zero six and the point one two to then get these numbers here. These numbers. Are as close as possible with the point zero six as weight. And these numbers are as close as possible with the point one two as weight. The conversion's not perfect. Um, for each of them. There's a little nuance with each of them, but that's as close as we were able to get them when we were running the numbers. So these are some changes um that that are happening because. When class rank changed a couple of years ago, the um elimination of. You know, class rank of valedictorian, salutatorian, the ways to recognize academic achievement and moving to the Latin honor system. Was always in the policy, but then it kind of was just how are we moving forward specifically with some of those procedures? And now looking at some of those procedures, uh, working through what the Latin honor system is. How we look at graduation speakers and then making sure that we're still delineating between. Um, our our top level students who. In traditional past would be, you know, one, two, three, four, five ranking. Uh, making sure that they still have, you know, that top mark showcasing first decile. Uh, just in a little bit different way with the four point O system. Um, one other piece, the four point O, um, it is. When we did our research, looking at the top high schools, that is very common, but then it also does pair. Um, nicely there with the college level as well, um, with the same scale system. So that is our our process for twenty four, twenty five with moving forward with this class of twenty five because of. Our graduation is changing and then with next year, uh, how the grade scale will be changing for all um grade levels. Um, starting twenty five, twenty six. Um, and I'm open to any questions that that people have regarding kind of some of the changes with. This school year specifically for some graduation components, but then also um here for the future with some differences for. How we're calculating from the one hundred point to the four point O system.
Okay, quickly, when you were mentioning that unweighted GPA, is that just for how you select the speaker eligibility?
Yeah, so everything on the transcript.
Whatever.
Will still be weighted and it will still showcase that way. Uh, but with the Latin honor system, there's not a weighted Latin honor system. So. When we initially ran the numbers of. Um, I don't, don't quote me on this specific number, but it was like sixty some students. That would have been eligible as graduation speaker on a weighted system. Um, so we didn't feel like that showcased. Um, so we didn't feel like that showcased uh, the top, that, that three point nine to four O uh, correctly, because we're using the weighted system um, on an unweighted uh, honor system.
Yeah, good question. So as you know, I'm an eleventh grader, and so we're getting in the thick of Can you explain like retroactively, so how is this going to get applied? I assume it is to the grades that, that the kids have already completed and freshmen and sophomores. You're just, you know, leading up. Is it gonna go back to calculate?
Yep, so, so a nine, let's say kiddo had a ninety eight there um, freshman year in a class. That would then be calculated as an A, as an A plus. And then that conversion, so the, the goal, the, the need is we have to have this all done before August one. Cause that's when the There's, there's a lot done. Um, so as Ms. Sands has been working on it, she's been working um, in tandem with uh, Ms. Schwindinger, who does a lot of the backend of Power School. So there's already some pieces that are there to showcase the four point O weighted and four point O unweighted. Uh, so it's then taking those, those pieces that she's already put in uh, to apply then to our transcripts in those pieces.
How, how are we, how, not we, how, how are you communicating this to parents that might freak out when their stuff all changes?
Yeah, um, so, so right now, I introduced it in the grade level meetings that we had last week. So, so students became aware of that. Um, I shared out newsletters to high school and to the current eighth grade. Not regarding anything specific to the grade scale at this point in time, because I wanted the focus to be on scheduling. But there's going to be a need, uh, basically timing the auditorium, invite people in, explain the, the process, what that's going to look like for um, one, the grade scale specifically, how that changes with the four O. We'll use a lot of those scales that were listed on there and the graphs that were created. Um, and then there's also in my beginning thoughts of just open house, um, having, you know, thirty minutes in the auditorium of time as, hey, here's this dedicated time for you to come in, um, ask questions, let you share the information with everybody. And then please, you know, go on, see teachers in those pieces. And then guidance counselors would stick behind, Mr. Sliskey, myself would stick behind to answer any questions from that parents would have to offer. I just didn't feel like it was time at um, the eighth grade scheduling meeting to kind of combo those together, just because um, both are pretty big lifts.
Yeah, and I mean, the eighth, the eighth grade parents will need to understand, but I'm more the people that are already in there because they might see a shift in stuff when they're looking at report cards and things that they've already seen other years. So, okay.
Sorry, can I ask a longer?
Yeah.
So welcome to the old system of ranks and then the new system of decile. So when does that information become available? Like, I'm thinking for part cards, which usually have the GPA on it, but they don't, they, I don't think they usually have a record decile on.
Yeah, so.
When a kiddo requests a transcript senior year?
Yep, so kiddo can request a transcript, um, but we begin that process, uh, junior year. Um, and then um, middle year, middle year, we run the transcript again to run the, where they're at with their GPA. And then end of year, we do that as well. So it gives a good um, just measure of kind of where they are for um, different things they might be there for.
Two question. Sounds like this gets us more in line with other high schools. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, um, from, from everything that we've been researching. And, and this research started before um, myself, like me, um, I know Ms. Moser, I know Ms. Reber, you were very much in the thick of the, the planning of that and looking at other high schools. Um, top high schools in PA and seeing what, what systems that they had in place. And that was part of the reason of the, you know, getting rid of class rank. And by that change of class rank, then that plan of always moving to the four O system to align with the Latin honor system has been several years, I think, in the making. Um, and now we're kind of at that culminating piece because of the class of twenty twenty five and.
And then you said, maybe I misunderstood, I'm not sure, but that, that this system now replaces the collegiate level system?
I, uh, just in regards to the four point O scale.
Right, right. So that's what I, that's my thought was the collegiate system does not use a weighted scale in any way, shape or form.
They do not, no.
Yeah.
Um, however, very few high schools uh, don't use a, they all use a weighted system to delineate kind of between that AP honors and academic course.
Cause in college, you don't have honors or AP.
Oh, you do. Well, and, and, yeah, and, and I would, and I would venture that, you know, the engineering program might be a little bit more intensive than maybe another program.
They're usually not reflected. I can tell you my four point O for my year of early education, but my roommate did not feel equivalent. I have four point O in.
Yeah, I, so I guess if I, and this is, this has been done a, a lot of work, so I, I worked to manage that at all. I just, I struggle with the idea, as you said, that someone could have a four point something or other, you know, above a four point O. And I get it, I understand why we're doing it. Uh, because obviously an AP class is more intense and there's, you know, an A in that class is, is different from an A in, in something else, right? And I struggle with, how do you get more than a four point O?
Right, absolutely. And, and that, when, when I started looking at it, I definitely said, how, how do you get an A plus? And that's why it was kind of, I don't, I don't want the A plus, because originally you're like, how do you attain above the A? Because an A should be the highest, but when you begin to break down the calculations, that's the, the best way to delineate between that top ninety versus that middle ninety. Um, and I think one piece with the weights, um, through some of this research, a lot of high schools get all the way to a five
Right.
On, on that weighting system. So we are a little bit below that with the point zero six and the point one two. So certainly always some discussion to move that weighting maybe not to be as much or, or those things.
Do you have a sense of how colleges look at that when students are?
Yes, yeah, as, as someone who's like in the thick of it, so I've talked to multiple counselors, both who've worked like full time in private schools. And their whole job is to get their kids into colleges and then also uh, counselors at colleges. The two things I, that I've, reactions that I've gotten when I've said that we don't do ranks, we do deciles, they're like, that's fine. That's like, no question, that's the immediate reaction. Uh, and then they've asked me, do they, do they wait GPA? And I say, yes, so I, but that's a good thing. Um, so, I mean, this is my personal experience, but it's totally aligned with what.
Yeah, and, and on the
Cause I had weighted GPA when I was in high school.
And on the comment app, you can choose class rank or decile. It says, what does your school do on the comment app? And then you just click decile. So it's, it's there as an option there for the comment app.
Yeah, I feel like especially for like Tom and little like you, the kids applying to lead schools, they're looking for this. So that they need to be able to distinguish themselves in that.
And certain schools do require a class rank for scholarship. For example, we, they, they can request that as well. Hey, they need that information, we can give that, we're just putting it off the report card.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have principals comments. So we'll start at the December, we're gonna give Jackie a chance to fill in.
Well, we've had a lot of things going on um, in both buildings over the last month, specifically in the last two weeks. One of those was our Read Across America Week, and we had lots of guests coming in to read to the kids. And um, they were very well received. Some of the teachers gave them clues, like, who do you think is coming? And they would pitch something and the kids would guess. And it just heightened their excitement for the visitor. Um, and one of the neat things that I saw, the reading in the classroom myself and observing some of the parents, parents that came in was if the book was part of the series, the kids immediately were like the next library class. Whereas the whatever book that they were reading, the egg book or, you know, the bad seed book. And they got interested in some new series that I'm sure their teachers had sitting on the shelves or that they'd seen before. But now they were inspired to go and continue with the series. So um, that was very special for them to have so many guests come to read to them. Um, we also had a really great turnout um, last week for our Kelly family literacy and math night. Uh, the library was, we, I was trying to find chairs to, to give to people to sit. And um, it was very well received. The kids all got to take a book or two with them. And it had um, basket prize drawings and they had activities and food and they, you know, but it was really neat to see the families sitting with their kids and listening to multiple people, teachers and administration, explain the SSS process and why it's so important for math and literacy to be addressed in this way to hit the, the needs of specific kids and groups. Um, to allow everyone to grow um, over the next, you know, couple of years in both buildings. And um, everybody was, they seemed to have a great time. We actually had them hanging around. The keep club brought um, students down and the kids didn't want to go home because they were so engaged with them. And, and I think they really enjoyed themselves too. So it was nice to see them brought together um, in high school as well. And um, I guess the final thing, now we had service electric, probably do fourth grade assemblies and teach the kids about safety in general. Um, and I don't think that the kids thought about some of the situations that they or their parents could find themselves in. And so they had this model um, set up. And every time the guy like climbed too close to, you know, go up to the pole and zap him. And then, you know, the kids would go up and they laugh. And they, they, they did a nice job of being um, preparing them and warning them about the safety and the precautions that need to be taken when working with electricity and showing them all these different scenarios throughout town in their homes. And they, they just, they, they enjoyed it and got some laughs, but also understood the theories of it. So we've had, we've had a lot of visitors um, in the last couple of weeks.
Just bringing my comments this evening, just thinking about um, with Shane and Cindy here. Um, they are so humble in, in all that they do. And they're two individuals that are continuously looking to improve. And they're who you want um, as teachers uh, looking to tweak what they're doing. Every year looks different for them. Taking the data and what they've learned this year, how do we improve it for next year? Um, meeting with us, just brainstorming ideas, finding out like, a- as Shane and Cindy both said, we've had data forever. Um, but is it really the best type of data? Are we using it? Or is it just there and we say we have it? They're trying to make sure the data we have is really impacting instruction. The interventions that, that we're using, it's efficient for teachers to look at. Uh, cause they're very limited in their time as they're teaching five or six subjects at every single school day. Um, they're working with teachers to develop that data literacy um, and making with forefront where they need input and finding ways to even streamline that and make it simpler. Um, and the relationship piece, I think that is something that's huge with them. And you can see that when they work with their kids. Uh, when their kids go into, whether they're working with them in the regular classroom, if they go down to their room, seeing them in the hallway, just thinking of activities to do um, at all times is phenomenal. So they are two wonderful individuals. I'm glad. They don't like the spotlight. Um, I know tonight is not something they were totally looking forward to. Um, but they're, they're wonderful people. So just wanted to highlight that. Um, weaving into just kind of finding ways to make uh, learning relevant and exciting. Um, one of our teachers at Kelly, Shandar Doe, um, is a massive fan. I've learned of the Iditarod. Um, and is very passionate about this, um, that she has her students are tracking, they develop a map of the Iditarod race, which is um, taking place right now. Her kids divide out and select a musher that they will follow. Every day they log in, um, she's actually paid for a subscription for um, real time GPS tracking of the mushers. Um, they, they've developed the map to scale. They've learned about mapping and the, the scale of a map um, as they, they track their mushers. They've also realized now with the power of technology, you can send the mushers, um, they call it musher grams. So you can write them notes that they will give to them at checkpoints. Um, so instantly, she's like, I guess what we just decided we're doing today. Um, so they did this, she typed them electronically and sent them. Um, then she also scanned them as PDFs. So they will print them and deliver them when they cross the finish line and known. Um, but seeing just the excitement the kids are having, you'll walk in the room and say, all right, let's tell them some facts about um, dog sledding. The Iditarod, Alaska. And these kids are just firing off these incredible facts that, that you would never expect first graders to, to let you know. Um, they've also developed uh, belt buckles, because all the rookie mushers, if you finish, you get a belt buckle. That's one of the big prizes to say that you've accomplished the feat of, of completing it. Um, so she's weaving all of these things and reading books about it. Um, it, it's just awesome to see the excitement. And this is something just going above and beyond, weaving it into morning meetings, um, and now tying some writing pieces into it. Um, nothing I wanted to highlight, we posted on our Facebook page, one of our custodians and another person that just does not like the limelight. Um, Mr. Curtis Beach, who is the nighttime custodian at uh, Lintown. This summer walked in the one day and he's in the break room and he has a video playing, he's listening to music and he is drawing. And these are like the most incredible drawings I've ever seen in comic book um, genre. My Curtis, what are you doing? And he is, he will spend weeks on drawing, getting the shading right. And I was like blown away. So I just started talking to him more about this. And you go in his closet and it's just wallpaper of all of his personal drawings. Um, and explained that he, he's trying to develop his own comic book and publish. So kind of trying to wear him down a little. I'm like, would you be interested in ever sharing this with our kids? Um, and he thought about it for a while, um, that he developed a PowerPoint he shared with me. We kind of brainstormed and looked at it. We had Mr. Snyder just get a feel from kids that they were interested in like the comic book genre and that style of art in art class. So he compiled some names and we had so many kids interested that we had two separate uh, presentations that he shared. Um, with the kids and got very excited by just being able to do that, which was really cool to see his excitement. Um, and then we wanted to continue with it. So he thought it would be good if he would come in and even help kids with their own drawings and show, how do you develop your drawings? What are things to consider? Um, and when Justin Strosser, who's been in here at times, always looking for good articles and guy, here's an idea, what do you think about this? That's awesome. Let's go for it. So again, I had to wear Curtis down a little and get him to say like, yep, I think I'm ready for the newspaper guy to be here. Um, but it got to the point where he said, hey, we're gonna do it this date, this time. And he made sure I knew every day. Um, and it all connected, everything came together. Um, and there was a great article in the paper this week um, of Curtis and interviewing kids and then just the pictures. And it's just been an awesome thing to see. Um, it's something, and you gotta love this guy, even because he comes in, it's his shift starts. He makes up that time later on. He doesn't even count the time he's presenting as his shift. So he gives that back and stays later. Um, but he's already thinking ahead, like, I think we can do this. And maybe next year, we can do this even more. Um, so just awesome to see and be able to showcase and highlight just different talents people have and passions kids can, can develop and have. Um, and seeing role models within our community that they can look up to. I mean, even said the other day, kids walked by and saw in his closet some of his drawings, um, and they asked if they could have some. But she was torn because, ah, oh, there's like three months in this piece. I gave him the drawings, because I thought if that's something that they're gonna remember and that's gonna make them exciting. Um, so he, he was giving out drawings, um, just an awesome thing to see. And it was so nice that we were able to showcase that um, and share that out there. So that's just the last thing I wanted to share. Pass it along to Mr. Spol. So our eighth graders weren't tracking mushers, but they did a musher on over to the high school. And I included this in a board of eight through email, but I, I just think it's so impactful. Um, I wanted to add it a little bit more, our visit to the high school with our eighth grade class. Um, everything, everything went really well. Uh, there was a great presentation with a lot of really useful information from Mr. Popovich and Mr. Sliskey in the auditorium. Our students were really well behaved. Um, which I know Mr. Sliskey even commented, made me feel like a really proud principal. And the link crew did a great job with tours as they always do. It's always neat to see our eighth graders seeing their friends that are upperclassmen and, you know, a lot of sixth graders with seventh graders and eighth graders sort of together for years. And then they get to see each other again. And just seeing that excitement, I always do have to remind them that we have a good solid three months left at the middle school, so we can't get too excited yet. But uh, the chance to eat in the high school cafeteria, um, they thought all the options were amazing. Um, and again, have to remind them that we're packed pizza and main choice salad sandwich, but um, and then to build off that, the gold program, which is growth opportunities and leadership development from the high school. I hope I'm not stealing any of your thunder here, but um, From the high school, I hope I'm not stealing any of your thunder here, but um. They came over uh to just promote uh leadership amongst female students and it's, it's a great program that I'm sure they'll talk more about. At the high school, but in order to try and promote it a little bit more, the timing was perfect the day after our high school visit. But coming to the middle school, meeting with um our female students to talk about. Uh, the benefits of being involved in this program and start to already form connections with students. It was just perfect timing. As we move into um the, throughout the rest of March and into April, we'll be working with our eighth graders on um. Scheduling during advisory and really dedicating time this year to doing that within the school day. Historically, it was just kind of, here's the information, figure it out. And now we're really making, making it a point to have our teachers assist students to make sure schedules are in line with career aspirations. Making sure they're considering prerequisites, the courses they might want to take in the future. Um, making sure they have the right amount of credits and everything. I'm sure it will save you guys some time hopefully over the summer. But it would, it just was really neat to see everything come together. Um, and my last piece, I don't even have a lot of words to describe it, but I hope you got to experience the South African choir last night. Um, I did, I had a two-year-old alongside me, so my focus was a little bit between some different things, but um. It was just amazing, their, their visits in the middle school and I know we're at Lindtown as well. Um, the. The excitement and the interest amongst students, middle schoolers can be hard to impress. Um, they've seen it all. You know, so those of you that have middle school children, you know that. Um, but just seeing some of our students and even. Some students who historically have, have had more challenges, talking to them afterwards and, and there, this is one thing I will never forget. One of my students who, again, like the typical classroom setup is, is difficult for her. She said, I always tell them, everybody around you, be quiet and pay attention. It was the most amazing thing I've ever seen. And I will never forget that. So just the chance to connect um. Our students with the outside world and they talk in music class, they talk about culture, they learn about culture. In seventh grade social studies and the sixth grade social studies, they're learning about culture, but for them to get to live it for an hour. And members of our seventh, eighth grade chorus to get to, and sixth grade chorus perform with. The group, it was just amazing. It, I really felt that sense of community that we, we have all the time, but certain things make you really feel it. And, and that was yesterday and Tuesday for sure.
Righty. Uh, my topics are very similar to Mr. Sikolik, uh, but I won't, I won't uh address kind of. The eighth grade coming over. It was a great time for sure. I think everything went really well. Our coordination was great. Um, eighth grade parent meeting uh did go very well. I think the, the numbers were incredibly high. We, we had printed. Seventy-five copies of, of items and we were out of those items and. I think the year before we did not print um even seventy-five and we had some remaining. So it was a really good turnout, uh just for them to hear. A lot of what was covered at that meeting during the, the school day for the eighth graders. Um, and then a lot of what Mr. Sikolik shared about prereqs and sequence and, and those pieces about being really intentional. The eighth graders coming over to ninth grade is really still important, um even for our upperclassmen. Uh, as they get closer to graduation or, you know, needing to be more intentional about what courses do I need to take, cause my interest is. In a science direction or it might be um within the arts and humanities section. So. We this week in advisory, um spent quite a bit of time reviewing the course selection guide, which is what that process. What's, what's in it? What's the prereqs? What's the sequencing pieces? Um, and then one nice piece that happened today was uh, Link Crew has been mentioned plenty of times. They're just such a great. Um, group of students that provide such great information uh to their peers and, and underclassmen, so. Link Crew went into ninth grade advisories today to basically answer any questions that ninth graders have, just to. Kind of support that process to make sure they're on the right track with those pieces. I think that's been a, that's a really nice touch uh this year that. Hopefully can impact some of those scheduling pieces, um because we've seen sometimes. Uh, I think maybe being in a college town, there's that kind of philosophy of syllabus week, syllabus week. Uh, let me explore these classes, which isn't um really, really an opportunity because it's based upon requests. So, um, I think just that intentionality with building out our schedule um is really valuable. Uh, they'll receive the schedule sheets as well, so we still have the paper copies, but then there will be the, the online portal that will open for them to enter those. Courses into. So I think that hard copy is just really helpful to have, you know, some conversations with teachers, counselors, um other peers. Uh, during their day. Last piece I want to touch base on is field trips. We have, we've had quite a few field trips here in the last. Week or two weeks. Um, and they're, they're all just so important, um and they all kind of reached the different bounds. So today we had a governor, government seminar, so Jean Yaw and a bunch of representatives were in. Uh, Penn College, so we had twenty students go up. Uh, they received. Uh, legislation basically of bills, uh s- some of which were real, some of which were, you know, created for. The, the seminar itself and they were able to argue kind of for or against why that bill should be. Um, approved or, or not. Um, last week. Maybe earlier this week, it's blending together right now. Uh, juniors went on a career day. They went on a career fair. Uh, to Sesquahannas, that just provided an opportunity for students to, to explore some options that are available to them. Uh, after high school for some post-secondary options, which is really valuable. Uh, there was math competition over at Bucknell uh yesterday for some of our high school students. Uh, so just taking a lot of what they're doing in classrooms and being able to um. Go outside of these walls and apply them, I think is such a valuable piece and, and one real great highlight that. That I don't think every other school maybe gets to capitalize on. So, uh, we're very fortunate for those opportunities. Um, so we definitely keep using, using those great resources in the community and, and in the region for us.
So I've been wrestling for about. Five hours of how I went to introduce this topic and that was a really good segue, because we are really fortunate to have all these opportunities for kids. Um, and I think Mr. Wutz was said, like over two hundred kids are, are involved in spring sports. Um, and, and it kind of, it starts in the, in the building, it extends outside the walls and then comes back into the building. And so I really wanted to highlight. Um, two things that are kind of going on all the time, some of the time, intermittently, I guess would be the best way to put it. Ms. Edwards in the Learning Commons has been putting together various career speakers and uh activities during students advisory time. Um, and it's been really um awesome to see kids coming down. In that kind of like formal setting, cause it's not, it, it's like, like a library, but kind of like not a library. Um. But with like the big high ceiling and stuff, it just feels different in here. So having uh various career speakers come in, just super engaging in that kind of atmosphere for kids. Um, and then the, like over, like the winter break, they made gingerbread houses and those kind of activities persist throughout the year. Making, making various stuff and connecting with their peers. Um, and seeing that kind of authentic connection uh between kids. Um, their known technology, they're sitting at tables, making stuff together. Um, has been super cool. Um, and that has extended, um the PE teachers have advisory volleyball, or at least. So when you walked in the hallway, I guess it's down here, the bracket is on the wall. Um, and kids are amped. We, I, we, we almost need security guards at doors to keep them from.
Girls made shirts today.
Yeah, uh, Miss Grease's class made team shirts. Um, I think they. Lost unfortunately, so the shirts were short-lived, but um. Just seeing that excitement, kids want to be down, they wanna, they wanna support their peers, they wanna. Witness history in the making, um advisory volleyball. Um, to see that engagement uh between kids, um it's just been super cool. It really is a testament not only to um our faculty, but also the kids and their willingness to engage one another. Um, and try, try stuff out, even if they might be uncomfortable or not, do some. Uh, I don't love playing volleyball. It feels embarrassing to me, uh, cause I embarrass myself. So. Projecting that onto other, onto kids, I think. Putting themselves out of their comfort zone and uh, and, and going forward is just a super cool thing. Upcoming stuff, PSAT ten is on Tuesday. Um, and also next week, we, I think I mentioned it at the last board meeting, but we're hosting the EBA regional chorus. So auditions are Wednesday night, um and then Thursday and Friday. Uh, as all the practice, um and then Friday night is the performance. Uh, and I believe this will also be around nine kids. Um, that'll be participating in that trying out. Uh, and then tomorrow, student council is having their blood run. Um, so that'll be going on as well. So it's had to get permission signed by parents and everything to, to participate in that, that'll be going on tomorrow.
Right, that's a lot of information. Um, it's a lot going on. I thought the eighth grade, meeting for eighth graders was excellent. I forgot to excuse Mrs. Kraus earlier. I don't think I said it, but. Susan's comments to the board on agenda items, I think we have none. Okay. Well, on to the fun stuff, a route.
Yes, let me show, share my screen real quick. Um, just grab this. So we have our roofing quote, I shared this with you at the last uh board meeting for information, um that. Previously was a quote that was not to exceed. Um, this again, just to remind you of the area, the area. In green is what was covered uh this past summer. And the area that is being proposed is all that's in yellow, uh was the middle school. Um, the red areas are for future phase three perhaps uh, uh for future roofing projects, but. Yellow, a big portion of the middle school getting covered by this. And so going back to the price point there, it was uh not to exceed seven forty, I, I shared previously. Uh, this is kind of the firm price, uh seven thirty-six, two forty-nine and sixty cents and. Majority of this is being offset by our public, public school facility uh grant, five hundred thousand, so. Um, capital projects would be two thirty-six and change. Um, and so we're looking for approval for this, this evening.
Do we hear a motion to approve? Uh, moved by Dr. Madison, second by Dr. Oh. Yeah, okay, then by Dr. Graham. Um, any discussion? About how many years until we do the red?
As money is available.
Okay. I did ask Delberg to step in tonight if there are any specific questions. Looking at a second summer where as soon as the students leave. The roofing company will move in and uh Delberg, I forget. Much of the summer, a good portion of the summer, how long is the project slated to do?
Um, I want to say we talked about. Most of the summer, I think we're looking at at least in the August, but we'll have to get, I'll have to get firm numbers when we do our. First meeting again, but it'll be similar to last summer, we're being in August.
And Mr. Sikolik, unlike last summer, we won't be wiring at the same time. So somewhat less invasive of middle school summer trapping cleaning.
Just areas for drains, where we're putting, installing the new drains similar to last summer. That we have to get inside the building, inside some of the roofs for drains, but not nearly invasive for sure.
I will miss the sound of.
Don't you get a good point last time that we shouldn't stage on a brand-new pavement? Is that possible that we could do it over by the ugly pavement by the sheds and dumpsters?
I mean, we can, but they, they put rubber matting and stuff down last summer and protected everything and. And we've gone over and looked, they're really, they really didn't damage anything after they pulled off, but if you.
If you think they won't do damage, that's fine, just.
It was paved before last summer and they, they were able to put a bunch of rubber matting down where they put their everything and stuff, so.
And then for the part that isn't getting done, we still have the long-term coverage, like the warranty for period.
Yeah, we were, yeah, we were, we were trying to go, we can build the on.
I think, is there any other questions? We're ready to vote.
Mr. Betzer.
Yes.
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Dr. Grant. Ms. Hanos.
Yes.
Mr. He.
Yeah.
Dr. Jablonski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kra, oh, sorry, she's, Ms. Lyons.
Yes.
And Dr. Mattis.
Yes.
All right, our next item is our um contract with um EPL. So is there anything important that we need to note here?
Uh, pretty standard, looked at a few different uh comparative pricing. This was. The best uh that they could give me. Um, I'd say on a two-year. Just with a lot of uncertainty and energy right now, I thought it was best not to lock him for too long. Uh, but also wanting to get a good price, so two years felt like a good medium.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Moved by Dr. Grant, second by Ms. Lyons. Any further discussion? We've done, we've done one year, we've done two years. I think the longest I've ever seen, we moved up to five years, I mean, cause we got a crazy good rate, right? But I agree, I don't know where things are gonna change. Does anybody else have any questions or, all right?
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Dr. Grant, yes. Ms. Hanos.
Yes.
Mr. He.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski.
Yes.
Ms. Lyons, yes. Dr. Mattis.
Yeah.
And Mr. Betzer.
Yes.
Right, next up we have our maintenance agreement with East Buffalo Township about, is that a little piece of road?
Yes, um, so in East Buffalo Township on forty-five, there is a section, you know, school zone. Um, from like the flashing light where it begins on forty-five to the other flashing light. That section of road, um if any signs uh would need to be replaced, they were just, she recently. Um, replaced and added and, and, and are new. Um, and the crosswalk itself, if anything would need to be replaced, if the sign. After ten, fifteen years, we need to be replaced, that cost would be on us to maintain. But we would have worked with the township on getting permits and things like that to do the work. Uh, but it's just that stretch of, of the road. Um, if the crosswalk would need to be repainted, we would work with the township to get that done. Um, so it's just an agreement, knowing who is um responsible for that uh work to do.
Uh, yeah, go, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Uh, moved by Dr. Graham.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lyons. All right, let's have it.
This may be a dumb question, but he, you talked about like if the sign wears out years from now, is there any kind of like insurance on the sign if somebody knocks it down? So those will probably be covered by the person's insurance, the car insurance. So again, that, that cost would be on them. It would, it would be working with them as well as with the township to get that replacement. So if it's something's bowed down in an accident. Um, then we would work with their insurance as well, but, yeah.
Let's hit one.
Um, maybe I'm missing this. Is this a brand-new contract or is it a group we had?
Well.
Question.
So it was ref, there was, I think there was an agreement long ago that they cannot find and we cannot find. Uh, but it was referenced in a grant application when they put up those signs that go across the, the road. Uh, it was referenced that there was an agreement that we would take care of maintenance and so, uh, they were hoping for there to be a. Agreement in place that specified, that was mentioned in the grant application. So. Uh, again, there's no money being exchanged here. It's just to, uh, again, if a sign would go down, um. Again, signs do age out over time. They look dilapidated over time and need to be replaced. Uh, that, actually the witness came up was at the crosswalk. We noticed there were some signs that needed to be there, could we put up some crosswalk signs? Um, on our high school property here, and so we asked the township, could you put some additional signs there? They did that, but in that, they were like, can we also have this in place as well?
That turns out this is the original urban legend.
So I am married to someone that does this all day, so that's why I have these questions. Is, so is this. Typical that a school district would be responsible? Cause typically the township is who would be responsible for these.
I have a suspicion and you can confirm or disconfirm, but so we sought a grant to put in these special lines.
Right.
And then, because the township might not have otherwise sought that grant because they wouldn't want to cover any replacement costs. We agreed to take on the responsibility of the area covered by that grant improvement. In perpetuity, apparently, according to an agreement that no one has a.
No one has.
So we did ask our solicitor and he said it's not uncommon for this to be in place. So, uh, that was our due diligence and um. And so they, I mean, I kind of put it to the side for the time being, but they kind of brought it back up, like, could we get this in place? So, um, that is up to your discretion.
Yeah, so I asked if we could paint uh dragon feet on our section of the road and apparently no. Oh, did you think we could? You're making a face like. Oh, did you think we could? You're making a face like you.
Uh, we, the crosswalk that's there, there's two lines. We want to potentially add a little bit additional paint. Like there are like downtown Lewisburg and what they call the piano keys for the crosswalk. That look is kind of where we, we eventually get to, but, um, again, this is the proposal and they're looking good to you.
I think we would always want the lights. I think we would always want well-painted crosswalks. I think we would always want to make sure it had the right signage. And if we did want to do additional signage in some future suit where we had a more walkable initiative or whatever, we would want to be able to do that.
And the township is working on a potential grant to do some additional work in that stretch of, uh, of road. Um, that would include a lot of extra work, um, um, to that stretch of, of road. But again, that's if a grant is, is, it's, I think they applied for it, but I don't know if they got, or they got it back yet.
So the only other question that I would have about this is in a situation where any of those signs or lighting wouldn't even come down for road work that is not something we'd want to do. So say like, handout on a state road or something or whatever, came through and said we need to do this and take it down. So typically a township would be responsible for then anything that needs to be done with those lights. Um, and so like we would then, are we then responsible even if we had nothing to do with that?
They would dig up the road, which they've done like for maintenance of some kind. They, it is their responsibility to make it like it was. So to repaint the lines that were there, and there were some missing lines there that they then didn't paint as a part of this conversation.
So we actually have this contract in place. They won't come back and say like, oh, well, you guys are responsible for doing that now, correct? Like that would be my, my only little thing.
Yeah, and if they, if they're digging up that road, it is up to them to make it back the way that it was. But, um, if the, the lines would be faded, that will be on us to do the maintenance of it, not to, to replace.
And they understand that as well.
What happens, what happens if we don't want to do it?
Yeah, it doesn't seem like there's any reason we would actually, like, why would we take this on if there's nothing written?
Apparently allegedly we did take it on at one time. Nobody can prove that apparently.
That is, that is just for discretion, we can have, we can have more further conversations.
Like kids don't have a crosswalk then, or I mean, what's the?
Yeah, again, it was referenced to an earlier contract. So that's, it was, I don't know if that conversation, uh, over, you know, twenty-five years kind of got lost, but, um.
Well, we've always paid for the electricity for the flashing lights. We've also paid for the signs and flashing lights themselves, correct? Who's paid, like who paid for them?
The signs themselves, was that in a, a grant?
So that's my assumption is the only way this would even come up is if we wanted to make an improvement that the township didn't want to make. Because then they'd say, well, there's, you know this?
So from my understanding, cause this, these were put in maybe pre-COVID, but I'm not so sure. Um, the township actually reached out to us and said, we're replacing the old lights with new lights. We, as far as I know, the board, anybody did not reach out to them and say, we want to replace it from there. They reached out, Buffalo Township, East Buffalo, reached out to us and said, hey, by the way, we're gonna let you guys know, we're putting these lights replacing the old ones. Once they, once that happens, once we get them put up and installed, you guys are gonna be on the hook to do any repair maintenance on the signs, on the the lights and the signs once they get put up. So we didn't ask them to put the new ones up. The new crosswalks, the new, the new, um, fifty mile an hour signs. Well, that wasn't, we didn't reach out to the township. That was only done a few years ago. They reached out to us and said, hey, just to let you know this is happening.
This is happening, you're now responsible for.
But before that, we, I, the, the old light, older lights, I believe the school district did pay for it and saw because that's why we own the electricity. That's what we paid for because we would pay for the municipal lights, the ones over Kelly, the ones here for the high schools. And then the older signs, even the ones on forty-five and fifteen by the, by the old high school, those because we actually had the, we had the meters and we had to build them.
I guess my question is, is, is there, and I don't, I'm asking this, I truly don't know. Is there a response? Obviously we want this whole signs. Like I'm not saying we want to have those to not pay electricity or anything. But like, is there somebody who has a rule or law they have to follow that puts those lights up there? Because if the township has a response, like if there's a wall that says if there's a school, there needs to be these lights in front of it. Then that doesn't sound like that's a school responsibility. That sounds like it's a township responsibility and therefore then they're responsible for the lights. And they're just saying it's for the school, so you guys should take care of them. Or do we have rules we have to follow that says we have to have them? Because if there's a rule, I would hate to say we're contracting responsibility for something that there's a wall that it's already covered.
But you said that, um, according to the solicitor, we have precedent at other places that this kind of agreement exists.
Said it wasn't uncommon for this agreement to be in place.
All right, so Pat thinks this is normal.
But if it's normal, still doesn't mean just that people are willing to sign a contract.
Our students do cross that road, and so I think that's probably why it might have started is our students are crossing that busy road. And making sure that there are, you know, signs marking to, to let people be aware.
And there's no like responsibility that like the township has to make sure there's school markings.
Not that I'm aware of, we can do some more homework as well.
I mean, you want to table it?
It can't be a huge sum of money.
It's, I mean, yeah, it's gonna be if something happens.
To be safe, bro, from the street.
I agree.
No, I mean, that's fine.
And it apparently doesn't come up very often because.
Sorry, the flashing lights new? The, were they replaced?
Yes.
Yes, that was.
The flashing, the flashing, the fifty mile an hour signs and poles and everything, those are new. Five or six years ago, like recent, like really recent, like within the last probably four to five years.
Just recently, this past, three months ago, they, they added some additional signs right at the crosswalk itself and said, here's a crosswalk.
Right, yeah, those I've noticed, but I guess I, I mean, why did they? We have slowed down a little more, you don't see them.
I do.
The older ones that were up, maybe not, I think the older ones that were up, I think they weren't as noticeable because they're like the one that Kelly. Where these ones are more like the ones that, you know, they go across and you can actually see them. So they're, they're more noticeable than the old ones.
That seems like a good thing for a crosswalk, a noticeable sign.
Are we okay to move forward? All right.
Dr. Grant.
Oh, yes.
Ms. He knows.
Yes.
Mr. He.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski, yes. Ms. Lyons.
Yeah.
Dr. Mattis. Mr. Betzer.
Yes.
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Somebody can hold on to that contract in case.
All right, our next thing was an MOA with Mifflinburg about the ag program.
Speaking of unwritten, nobody can find agreements. This district has long cooperated with Mifflinburg. If a student wants to study agriculture, we don't have the program. It's been a forever agreement that neither district can find, but is understood to be in place. We have from time to time had an individual student want to study and go. The working arrangement is they register in Mifflinburg. We are assessed Mifflinburg's tuition rate. The student transports self to Mifflinburg, registers there and participates in all their programming. The wrinkle that used to be in place was they came back to Lewisburg to graduate and receive the Lewisburg diploma. Enter into where we are now. We have three total students there now, one sophomore, two juniors. The two juniors have been very involved in Mifflinburg's programming. They've been on stage, they've been in activities, they've played sports. They are voicing the wish to have a Mifflinburg diploma at the end of next year. So Dr. Didi and I sat down and worked with what you've had the copy of to review. In a sense, honoring the students' wish to have the diploma from the district that they have felt a part of for these past, what will be four years, three years going into next. It gets a little more complicated if they choose to go to SUN. The five-member districts of SUN have quotas of seat allotments for each program. I offer you, we don't tend to fill ours. They, by contrast, have a very competitive process as they have more students who want to attend than their quota of slots. So in this agreement, there is the understanding since they're our students and we're paying the tuition. First of all, if they choose SUN would be that they would take from our quota of slots. But with Mifflinburg paying the difference of the SUN tuition rate that's calculated per student. If the student stays at Mif High School for senior year and doesn't go to tech, they're simply asking to have the Mifflinburg diploma awarded to them. We will continue to pay the tuition. An ag student in their senior year stays the first period of time in the morning to be a completer, as they call it, of their ag program. Our tuition rate will be adjusted proportionately. And then the student will go to BoTech. If we should ever reach our quota of students for SUN, if you read down through all the pieces, then Mifflinburg does understand that their slot would come from their apportioned quota. And their selection process would be utilized to determine if they get a slot at BoTech. Signing it means we'll stow it, save it, store it and make sure we refer to it often. Again, it's not a volume number of students. It honors the idea that they want their diploma from the district they've attended. And the cost factor seems to be very appropriately apportioned us until BoTech. Only if our slots are unfilled, theirs, if they would become filled. Student changes all of that and doesn't want to stay there. No harm, no foul, they come back, they're out. That's what's in front of you, the same thing.
Yep, uh, moved by Dr. Mattis.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lyons.
Questions?
When we're figuring out the tuition, obviously we know that Mifflinburg receives a larger portion of state money than you. Is that factored into that?
Okay.
Right, it is, but, but even in that lower tuition, more of that tuition is covered by the state. So they're claiming the student when they're reporting to the state.
The subsidy for daily membership. They will pay the difference of our tuition rate to tech versus theirs. They will pay, they've calculated it to be about four thousand for each of these two. And that's on their dime to make that payment. The fairness is what impresses me about entering into this arrangement.
I mean, I think it makes sense for the, some tech seats, because I have wondered how that worked. Because we do send less students and Mifflinburg sends a lot of students. And it does seem unfair for us to use a Mifflinburg seat for one of our students.
Yes, the numbers I can share, but easily, they fill in abundance and create waiting lists. Whereas we don't.
And if anything, it actually can benefit our students because of that, like the programs like welding that fill up really quick and stuff. They're, they have those seats available. Our, would benefit students not our Lewisburg, not in Mifflinburg.
This then involves, maybe it will call for this.
Ms. He knows.
Yes.
Mr. He.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski, yes.
Ms. He knows.
Yes.
Dr. Mattis.
Yes.
Mr. Betzer.
Yes.
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Dr. Grant.
Yes.
Question here.
Our next item is.
Ironically.
Say we want a student.
A rising grade nine student, Michael and I have talked, he is the kind of student that best benefits from undertaking the ag program. His parent has written the requisite letter that you have. I ask that you approve tonight for this particular student next fall to begin in the ag program at Mifflinburg.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Uh, moved by Ms. Lyons, seconded by Dr. Grant. Any discussion? All right.
Mr. He.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kra. Ms. Lyons.
Yes.
Dr. Mattis.
Yes.
Mr. Betzer.
Yes.
Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Dr. Grant.
Yeah.
Ms. He knows.
Yes.
Question carry.
Our next item, our changes to the support staff handbook. We also have them in our folder.
You have them in your folder. I didn't know how well they would project. You have, uh, the full support staff agreement as an attachment. When we touch the support staff agreement, it's good practice to come back through the board process for you to have that awareness and vote to approve. I summarized in the bulleted points. It is an agreement, twenty-four through twenty-eight. Mandy asked out of payroll to have the date placed on it, so we did indeed put it there. In meeting with the support staff council, they commented it is really difficult to put twenty unique positions under one handbook. Remember, we feel having brought together, unionized and non-unionized under one, that we are supporting our support staff through this particular, uh, handbook and arrangement. Uh, but they do share with you, it does cover a lot of unique positions. One of the clarifications, two point zero eight. We no longer have eleven month employees. There had been two individuals that didn't work twelve months, but worked longer than the school year. Language change. Two point zero eight. School code and law has extended the lists of relatives and near relatives that are encompassed in grievement leave. We've added those additional kinship relationships to our language. Two point one seven. Previously, you worked one full year before earning vacation time in our support staff handbook. The reality of our hiring that now takes place at any given time of the year. It has been a challenge to say to an individual, no vacation in the full first year. My example to you. Our Christmas holiday this year was two full weeks. But it would have involved four days not awarded by our handbook. And this individual would not have had the opportunity to have those days with no vacation provision. And yet, everyone else was leaving as school was closed down. So we felt a modest effort would be to put some pro-rated days there. And so we. And so we list zero to five days within first year. Prorated for whatever time of the year they begin their employment with us. Thought it was modest, but important to include. The bigger changes are indeed three point zero one and four point zero one. We have moved from a simple dichotomy of satisfactory or unsatisfactory evaluation for our performance. You all may remember, we presented to everyone a three possible rating system. Does not meet expectations, meets expectations, and exceeds. We had a lot of good administrative team discussion about how difficult that will be to tease out between meets and exceeds. Times twenty positions and very different job requirements. Our support staff council wants very much to see that merit or exceeds remain in place. So our support staff handbook not only carries those three, but also then in four point zero one, does capture those pay increases associated with the ratings. And the last piece, modern and efficient. We have indeed taken the provisions that are covered in the subsections and policies, made it searchable, linked it to the policies, making the document more efficient and easier to access the pieces and parts. I would ask that you approve these changes to the support staff handbook.
Do I hear a motion to approve? So moved, moved by Ms. Hanos, second by Ms. Lyons. Any further discussion? I really appreciate the effort, because I think where you print the policy in the handbook, as soon as we change the policy, the handbook is out of date, so that's worth doing. And, um, this doesn't involve us actually spending money, this can be in our folder.
I would say.
Yeah, all right, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is the, um, information about the lighting project.
Take that one. Um, so we, uh, well, Green Dragon Foundation did have a campaign, fire up the lights for lighting and sound at our turf field. Um, and they have completed their goal of two hundred thousand, they've raised two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Um, and so that will be going to offset any costs toward, towards this project. Uh, we did work with Keystone and with Musco, who would be the supplier of the lights. Um, to look at this quote, but before I show the price, I just want to show you kind of on this page here. Um, again, here is our soccer field, the, the lighting would, uh, be four poles. Um, parking lot, the new parking lot is here to the right left. Um, four poles, um, and then on these, these poles by the parking lot would be additional lights facing downward towards the parking lot and flooding that area with light as well. Um, speakers, if that item is selected as part of this, they would be on these two poles as well. Um, going towards the bleachers, um, again, more because it's closer to those bleachers, so that's why. Those are, um, at that location. Um, all of the service to get there is, is a part of that. Um, a cabinet with, uh, some, uh, audio controls underneath the bleacher as well. Um, and then to the pricing, uh, because they also included, um, roadway lighting pricing, if we would like to choose that alternate, as well as, um, tennis lights, we do extensions for both of those in a previous project that we've done. Uh, let me just pull this up a little larger. Um, but you can see, again, for information, the lighting itself is at five hundred thousand, lower than our original quote that we would have had earlier. Um, and then speakers, um, sound system at fifty-one thousand. And then other alternates that could be considered, um, tennis lights for one thirty-five and seven roadway lights on that loop road going around, um, for seventy-one thousand. Um, again, the project, the campaign was raising money for lights and sound. Um, so that would be most likely the suggestion unless there's other questions on that. Um, we can definitely entertain those as well, but, um, that is the proposal.
Think to add, two things we're hoping for is the potential for a grant for safety to do with the roadway lighting in the future.
Yes.
As long as we have the last time, and then also potentially being able to maybe raise money for tennis court lines, so that, that could be also a future item. But those bases at least are in place.
Correct, extensions are there, yep.
The information tonight coming back to me.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions that they would like to have answered before we would potentially take this for a vote next to me? All right, um, it is nine o'clock, so let's have the superintendent's report. Oh, actually, I will say, I'm very thankful to the Green Dragon Foundation, they sent us some great updates of not only what they've raised, but also sort of things that are still coming in as budgets, so we're able to apply that in our capital projects balance. I think maybe some of you noticed that, so that's very helpful to move things forward.
I too, in the interest of time, will take my report and lay it aside. They have shared wonderfully tonight. I praise our principals, all of them for the work you've heard about this evening, the awesome things that are happening in all our schools. It's, it's just wonderful. I am so pleased, so proud, and so glad to got a chance to hear all the good things that take place in our schools.
Okay, do we have any more of these on the committee reports?
No.
Yep. Can I make a CSIA?
Yeah, yeah.
I know it's nine o'clock, I'll try to.
Oh, no, it's just, sometimes there's an attachment, but, oh, no.
Um, so this information that was shared with the CSIA board members, and I don't think we shared with this group last time, uh, at the time before, we were talking about budget, that we were talking about federal funds, simple percentage, I think, so far, school budget. Um, media contact and CSIA have a similar question, this was the information that was shared that I thought was important to, uh, to share with the group here. Um, so, CSIA single audited twenty twenty-three of all federal revenue reported, that thirty point six percent of the CSIA's total revenue was made up of federal funds. That sold us twenty-eight point six million round. Um, this is most likely much higher than individual districts because of the number of federal grants that CSIA competes for. Um, and that also can be passed through federal funding, like IDEA, that helps to support special education staffing across the seventeen districts, et cetera. Um, and providing that for school programming, early childhood programs, things like that. Um, and also federal revenue that was unique to CSIA is their current grant that they have from Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, called Impact. This is a four to five year grant that they're currently in, year three of, uh, but it is annually appropriated. So there's a very good chance that this may not continue. Um, CSIA is obviously working with the agency to find out information about that as soon as they can, and devising backup plans to try to continue the work. Uh, but it's important to note that the outcomes of this grant already, uh, include, um, training, uh, over seventeen hundred teachers, administrators, community clubs, police, social workers, and mental health awareness and prevention. Uh, staffing and structural support of Geisinger's Bridge Clinic for critical care of youth in crisis. Professional development consultants to support sustainable systems in schools. Uh, beyond boundaries, non-traditional programs to prevent dropouts, so he supports students in need. And finally, resilience, resiliency training for students, as well as supportive structures to help recognize signs of distress and ask for help. Um, and I just think it's, you know, incredibly important for us to be aware that all the benefits are important for this community. Um, and are currently, uh, status and, so it's wanted to share that, thank you.
Thank you. What was the total amount then?
Uh, twenty twenty-three audit, thirty point six percent of the CSIA's total revenue, twenty-eight million, five hundred eighty-one thousand. And that's, yes.
Is that their full budget, or that's the thirty percent?
I'm sorry, what? So it's a thirty percent, or is it? I believe it is. I believe that's the thirty percent.
The thirty percent of their.
Information on paper.
Operating, but you're correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Right, we're on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Okay.
Uh, moved by Ms. Lyons.
Sorry.
Second by Dr. Mattis.
Answer a question?
Yeah.
I was just looking at the G D M, the gift agreement, and it just has zero, it has like X X dollars, is that just saying we're in on a agreement?
We don't ever put the dollar amounts in the.
Oh, in the public.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But good question, yes, we can know that, if you want to know that.
Okay.
Um, all right, any other questions? All right, I think we're ready.
Don't think you're going to.
Yes. Ms. Lyons.
Yeah.
Dr. Mattis.
Yes.
Mr. Fetter.
Yes.
Dr. Grant.
Yes.
Dr. Grant.
Yeah.
Ms. Hanos.
Yes.
Mr. He.
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item is citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items, and we have some to read.
We do, we have two to share this evening. Review the district-wide cellphone use during school hours is the topic. I would like to request the policy committee revisit the current cellphone policies for students at all L A S D locations. Recent research studies, and they quote the Journal of American Medicine, Pew Research, and others, show the impact on education from cellphone usage during school hours. A February twenty twenty-five Journal of American Medicine Pediatrics documented that students spent a mean of ninety minutes on their phone during school time, with one in four students using it more than two hours during the six point five hour school day. Many other districts, including the largest district in the country, Los Angeles Unified School District, eight states, and even countries have implemented recent measures that limit cellphone usage during school hours. Updating Lewisburg Area School District's policy based on the new research and forming clear expectations for all students and parents will help ensure the hours at school are used for learning. Is the first one.
We need to identify who we're vetting.
So I can verify that this individual is a resident in the school district. And in talking with our solicitor today, it is our option to share name and address. We have a number of individuals who would rather that not come forward. Um, they have filled out the form correctly with their name and address, and they are indeed a resident of the district. All right, the second one, also a resident of the district, non-agenda item. Much lengthier, hang in there with me, please. Electronic device policy and processes. Good evening, I am submitting comments here which follow up on an email sent last month to the board and select administrators. That email shared key findings from a number of surveys and studies released over the past twelve months related to student use of and policies on personal or electronic devices in school. To recap, three of those results. Seventy-two percent of high school teachers report that students being distracted by cellphones is a major problem. And he cites Pew Research. A National Education Association report asked educators if student use of cellphones during instruction time was, was disruptive. Responses were split out by cellphone policy as follows. Seventy-three percent of N E A members find cellphone to be disruptive in schools which allow students to use their phones between classes. Seventy-nine percent find cellphones to be disruptive where individual teachers set their own classroom rules on usage, which is our high school policy. Twenty-eight percent find cellphones to be disruptive in schools with a store away cellphone policy, similar to our middle school where phones are off all day and remain in lockers. In the same N E A survey, there is eighty-three percent support for school policies which prohibit cellphone use during the entire school day. Since reaching out last month, additional data have come to light with the most recent release of the School Pulse Panel. The School Pulse Panel through the United States Department of Education's National Center for Educational Statistics, N C E S, routinely surveys public K to twelve school leaders on high priority education-related topics. The most recent survey with data collected in December of twenty twenty-four was released just over three weeks ago. When school leaders in this survey were asked about the impact of cellphone usage on high school student academic performance, attention span, and mental health, the survey finds the following. Sixty-eight percent report that student academic performance has been negatively impacted. Seventy-nine percent report that student attention span has been negatively impacted. And seventy-seven percent report that student mental health has been negatively impacted. The results I list above address two key questions. What are educators seeing in their schools when it comes to cellphones and personal devices? And what are the cellphone and personal device policies that teachers support to best serve staff and students? In light of these data, it is natural to ask ourselves how Lewisburg students and teachers are doing. What do our teachers and staff see? Namely, are phones or other electronic devices a major problem in any of our schools? Do our teachers and staff feel they have the most effective policies and processes in place to create the optimal student learning and social environment? In conclusion, I ask that a systematic assessment and policy vetting be done. This would ideally be one that, like surveys cited above, seeks out direct feedback from teachers and staff and which would weigh the conveniences against the downsides of phone, smartwatches, earbuds. of phone, smartwatches, earbuds, and other electronic devices in order to evaluate if updates should be made to either the district's electronics devices devices policy or to the individual student individual school building processes that are outlined in their respective student handbooks. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for reading all of that. I wonder if this may be for completion and because the policy committee did meet and discuss, do you want to share?
We started our discussion. Heather, Kristen not here. Maybe I'll take a breath and you start.
Sure. Um, we met and we took, I think, what I would call a first look at the issue. And we, there's teachers, of course, in the group, and there are administrators in the group. And it was kind of a sharing, a preliminary sharing of what cellphone use or lack thereof is like in the buildings. Of course, in the middle school, it's prohibited during the day. Um, and it sounds like there's more to be discussed. There, you know, there's, there was a lot of discussion about what happens when you prohibit it. And it's, kids are really stubborn about getting around being told they can't do it or, you know, use a cellphone. There's other ways to get connected and communicate with others on the internet that don't involve the cellphone. So that was seen as one obstacle. Anyway, I guess I think that.
And I'm going to ask Josh or Jonathan, who were in our discussion. I realize the time, but maybe a summary comment or two either of you.
Sure. Um, I think some of the discussion also was the education has many facets, academics being a, the, the primary one that, that we're all geared. But there's also a lot of teachable moments in the education of proper usage of cellphones and kind of some differences between maybe a ninth-grade kiddo and a senior. So kind of teasing out what that could look like or, or what's some, some best options. So I think there's certainly a lot of discussion to have to move forward with. Um, and receive some input from teachers, students, um, just as we explore kind of how to best kind of proceed because certainly cellphones are out, cellphones are used. It is a way of the world. I mean, mine's sitting here as I speak. So like, it is kind of just ingrained into society at this moment. So it's kind of figuring out how to best operate at the, at the high school with them.
Exactly that.
Thank you. Well, uh, it sounds like to be continued. So thank you for the discussion.
I just have another question that we started to think about in that discussion. Some of the work, uh, advanced technology that's coming down the pipe, the wearable glasses that we may not necessarily know that students communicate, right? And we just started to think about those things and what that might mean and how we might. You know?
That is good. That is a good one to add. Certainly the discussion.
Any other things anyone want to, um, suggest to the policy committee?
Um, I'll just say, I mean, I think if before we decide anything, the, the sentiment that we should ask teachers in a systematic and the commentary used that word is, and why wouldn't we do that? And, you know, I think now the teachers are currently already bombarded with too many surveys, but I don't get the sense that that is the case. Um, part of my, uh, the guys who are advising, validating questionnaire tools. And so I, I'm all in favor of asking the question, not going into it thinking we're going to do this or that. But what they're saying is the teachers as a whole, we should at least find out what are, what our teachers present.
Can someone remind me, maybe a couple of years ago, we implemented this e-hall pass app or something like that? So people could leave class during class and it was on phones. And did it get, can we still have that? Did what happened?
Yeah, so e-hall pass, um, it's now run through securely. So I think it's called like securely pass. Um, but it's just an electronic pass system. So students can access it through their laptops or they can use their phone to make a pass. Uh, it just doesn't cause as much disruption. The teachers kind of set, uh, like one student or two students be able to leave uh, for, you know, the water fountain or the bathroom. And there's some auto-approved passes or, um, students need to go down for like an appointment. You can schedule those appointment passes. So there's some good record-keeping pieces to that.
Yeah.
And then there's also some good parameters of kind of when students want to meet up or have those scheduled meetup locations, they could prohibit uh, to students from being in the hallway or just reduce the volume of individuals in a bathroom or those types of things you could set some, uh, limits to. So those pieces are helpful. But yeah, you use your phone for the, for that.
That is actively used.
Um, yeah. So, so we use it there at the high school. Uh, some students use the laptop. Um, teachers can filter through the laptop as well. So there's a dashboard for it.
We don't.
Coming soon to a middle school near you.
Really? They can't have their phones during the day? So they would just do it on their device? Okay. I mean, on their, whatever.
So that might be something, if, if a survey, anybody who feels that that's what needs to go out, that seeing what are the positive things that are used in the high school phone? Because I think sometimes when we're looking at something towards just the negative stuff, we like, we say we implement it. And then we find out there's like all these things positively that are being used or teachers are using them in ways or whatever. If that's a thing that's happening.
Or accelerometers.
Yeah. So I think you're making sure we don't do that.
So useful for a lot of things. If you have a calculator, just turn your phone sideways.
And on the top of like, kids are sneaky, like, just as a personal experience, I remember in high school, like, we implemented something on the computer. So nobody could like get on certain websites and we all immediately learned what a proxy server was and got around every firewall, like immediately. Like, I don't like, I know the.
I'm talking with a microscope.
They can't believe it. But like, in reality, then, it's like, we all use proxy servers, sit around the games. But it got us completely around the system. So like, we could have gotten on anything
Yeah.
on the computers, all because they were like, people are on games. So like, then we could have been searching really, really not appropriate stuff on school computers. So like.
I can't imagine, I mean, we don't have smartwatches in our dress code. I can't imagine us ever taking off any wristband-based thing, right? Because that would be privileging kids who.
Yeah.
The practicality of it, right? The practicality of it is.
I mean, we're, like, they're not having, I'm going to sound old, but they don't have game boys. Like, they're not carrying, like, gaming. You know, I mean, on the other end of the spectrum, there are other electronics that we clearly wouldn't like have.
Right.
Using us.
But just to speak, um, I, I agree with the idea of like, let's get a broad sense of what most of the teachers think and feel about the issue. That sounds, um, like a good way to gauge sentiment. But in the defense of our teachers, I get the sense that I, I certainly hope, in my sense, at least from what I heard, is that teachers know if the students are not engaging material or the classroom or, you know what I mean? If a student is just completely out to lunch on, on the phone, this, the teacher's not. And, um, I think that in some classrooms, there's frank discussions about it. You know, we need you engaged. And if you're engaged, I, I know it. And if you're not, if you're checked out because you're scrolling, I know that too. So, I mean, it's a very, very slippery slope, but I do think our teachers are, are on it. And I, I would like to know how they feel about it as well.
Yeah, I would just like to add, I think that systematic assessment would be great. I like, let's get all the information we can. Like, I think maybe teachers can share that, like, oh, actually, like, this part of it is a problem. We could have a policy that addresses this particular issues that I've seen cropping up and I'm having trouble with. Versus actually, it's going well in these areas or like really the ninth graders are struggling, but like my fourth graders are fine. So kind of just giving us feedback to be like, okay, like, these are aspects maybe that we need to address, but actually it's working for these groups or these classes. And then I think that would also help to our community members. I don't think the people are alone and they're concerned. I'm kind of with them that technology can be really insidious and it affects your attention in ways you don't know. And so I think if we're able to get that feedback from teachers, like, actually, it's going okay. And like, we can tell you and share that our students are doing great with it. Then I think that would be a great thing to address and be able to share. And be like, actually, we have looked into it and things are going pretty well and we fixed and addressed the areas that aren't.
I think asking our own teachers is a great idea and finding out what's going on. For, for the record, I could care less what they do in Los Angeles. And I don't really care what the N E A has to say about it either.
Uh, why not?
Huh?
Why not?
Because I don't think they're a valid organization. I think they have ulterior motives that aren't in the best interest of kids necessarily. And I don't think that survey is necessarily a a valid tool without having seen it. Just, and I, I only interject that from seeing things that they've attempted to interject into union negotiations and contract negotiations over the years that have nothing to do with what goes on in our schools and what's in the best interest of our kids. And to our teachers' credit, they feel the same way. And typically, they don't endorse those kind of processes in our own contract negotiation to them.
Thank you. I would just add that maybe what's also important in the policy discussion, and I apologize, I haven't read the full policy press on this, but the accountability piece, um, and making sure that that is uh, standard. In other words, I'm okay with the idea that teachers, uh, get to kind of have a say over, you know, what's happening in their classroom. Um, but if there are, uh, violations of whatever that is, what's the accountability piece? And so that students aren't being held accountable differently from classroom to classroom, right? So that there's some standardization of how students will be held accountable. Uh, if they do violate whatever policy or procedure we're involved with, so.
My last intervention on this, which I've said to the board before, but my only other thing about school stuff is there has been quite a few school shootings where the kids with school, with phones are the ones that have notified first about that. So that's always kind of my go back on. I mean, I haven't heard huge complaints. I'm sure phones are an issue. I mean, they're an issue everywhere. But that's also the part about that I think sometimes when we're looking at phones and as parents and we're concerned about education, we don't like to think about the bad parts, like they do provide more communication out to emergency services in the areas that we allow them. If there was an emergency.
I have been in, uh, the front office of the middle school, if you might remember this, when a parent was very upset that their child could not carry their cellphone with them. Um, and George had to intervene for that reason and others. So presumably there are other parents who have that feeling.
Does anyone here know that the Alice training, I mean, is it contingent upon every child having?
No, not at all.
That, that's all. I just wanted to be yes or no.
Yeah, so. We'll go to director's comments. We'll start down here. Ashley, if you want to get going.
Yeah. Um, yeah, very, very. I was just, I appreciate the opportunity to participate in the Reading Across America. I just wanted to thank you, the librarians, for including us. It's just great to be involved in reading and get that. I really enjoyed them intervention, going back to what you were going to say, the name of that report. Because kind of to your question, Aaron, um, in being from my research background, right? We see that that early intervention in math and reading is like really where you make up those gaps and that you catch the students, right? So they never fall behind. And so they're not hitting sixth grade and they can't do application. So I think that's just, it sounds like we're doing really great things. And I was really excited to hear about all that great work. Um, and I think we just talked about the phone policy, which I was going to say. But I think for me, it's important to say, like, it doesn't have to be all or nothing, which I think it can be easy to fall into that debate of like, yes, phones, no phones. It's like, okay, like, we can, we can come somewhere in the middle and figure out how it works.
I'd just like to thank, um, Josh for the presentation about the Latin honor system and the grading system. I'm remembering, um, Paula talking a lot about how class rank really got to be a toxic thing for our high schoolers and maybe wasn't as reflective of students' achievement as this new system hopefully will be. So thank you for the time to present that.
Uh, going back almost two weeks ago, it seems like, you know, in eternity, uh, Shrek was awesome. I really enjoyed that. And just the, I'm always amazed at the talent and dedication. And I mean, just, uh, it was a great production. So I really enjoyed that. Uh, tonight, seeing all the students here is always a lot of fun. And Michael, I have to say, this is a compliment. So get ready for this. You were such a middle school principal. No, 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 I didn't say that. I said it's a compliment. It just, um, I think, I mean, uh, just many conversations from middle school teachers and administrators. Um, it's a special job. So, um, as you guys were going down the line, I was like, man, he is such a middle school principal. So that's a good, in the best way possible. Um, you know, so thank you for all, all, to all the administrators uh, for your updates and everything tonight. It's, uh, there's a lot going on as always. Uh, it's springtime, weather's changing. So, um, it's always exciting to hear all, everything going on.
Um, yeah, I think everybody took time. I was going to say, uh, yeah, thanks to everyone involved in Shrek. Uh, thanks to Mrs. Hornberger for inviting us to read. I read two books about cats and dogs and I got to find out what everyone's pets were. Everybody's name though. Um, and, and thanks for, now with the presentation on the, the ranking system there. Um, it'd also come Mr. Fishel and his past secrets, but, but pictures of my kids, dear in the heart. And, uh, I really enjoyed hearing about that.
You know, all the track is wonderful. Um, I forgot to start spoiling sorry, that's late. Um, thank you, Swinburne. It was a highlight of my day to read to Mrs. Herbs, second grade. They were wonderful. Um, and just thanks to the administrators, uh, in particular. I think one of the things we don't necessarily think about all the time is no news is good news. Which means you guys are really doing a good job at the building level so that there are, you know, there is springtime and there are things, issues that come up with kids. And those things are not rising to this level. It means you're doing a really good job down there in the building. So thank you for that. Um.
Um, a lot of the same. I will say, I didn't realize it until Eric said about like that because teaching, you talk about the Iditarod and that teachers have specific things they want. And I also did a very large course and worked great on the Iditarod. So now I'm wondering if my teacher was really into it. But just sharing a fun stat that can be shared on, is not already shared, is Delta, who we all know, only runs about five miles of Iditarod. And Togo ran two hundred and sixty-one miles, the hardest thing. So that's like a fun thing. And there's a Disney Plus movie. Um, also glad to hear how good volleyball is going. Um, I also am not a volleyball fan. Uh, my high school was big on volleyball. And we did like two semesters of volleyball in gym. And I think it was some sort of torture for us. Um, but that's exciting. Uh, I didn't get to track, but the African fire was amazing. Um, and I think that experience, I, I'm always so impressed by our music department and how not only do they bring in outside people, which they do almost every year specifically for course, but to be able to get the grades together, I think that's something really unique too, that it's just kind of common here in Lewisburg. But like, I don't, at least it, it's not something I used to see before. So to see like the middle school and high school all be together. And I mean, I know Van does it at times. And I just think that's really awesome. And it's a really good opportunity for the students. Um, but yeah, great job of everything going on.
So I was mildly amused at the Iditarod story, with the idea of them getting the messages. And my pick, when I first, when he first told me about it, I had this vision of them trying to read these messages from personal creators while they're driving a sled across. And then it dawned on me that they like stop overnight and take up the next leg the next day. So that seems safer. It was more amusing when I thought they were doing a water slide.
Inside your head is interesting.
No.
All right. So, you know, to everything everyone said, but the thing I want to highlight was the girls' basketball team. Because how cool is it to see people who like each other so much? They're like encouraging each other up to the podium. They're referring to their coaches, like some of their, you know, like their div is their family. Their coaches are close friends and mentors. I'm like, I mean, my kids have had great experiences on all their teams in the district. And I think that that is, and everyone gives props to Mr. Retschel Senior. Sorry. and I think that that is, and everyone gives props to Mr. Retschel Senior. Sorry.
Texting, calling, you know. Now I know, I just need Brent Sample to call him so he'll answer.
And so I think that that's sort of the model, right? We hope to see that with every team, with every performance group, everyone in the musical, everyone in the band, everyone has that feeling, right? They have that really cool group around them. I think that's something special about Lewisburg. So that amused me a lot. It's very nice to see that. And I think, if that's all, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Lyons, second by Dr. Grant. All in favor, say aye? All right, you're.